All right, seeing that it's 7 o'clock, we'll open up the meeting of the Halifax Planning Board at 499 Plymouth Street in Halifax. 7 o'clock meeting in the Select Men's Meeting Room, Thursday, January 16th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Just so everyone knows, the Planning Board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be viewed on YouTube. Okay, I have the agenda here in front of us. Everybody have a chance to renew it, to review it? I'll accept the motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I make a motion to accept the agenda as read?
And second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Attending the meeting, Brendan Elliott, Amy Troop, myself, Tom Millius, and Rick Murray. Okay, let's start off with Zero Mon Ponsett Street, first on our agenda. Lot, map 95, lot 10, site plan review. Applicant requests a continuance to February 6th, 2025 meeting.
A motion that we continue the hearing for PSPR 24-2, Zero Mon Ponsett Street, map 95, lot 10, site plan review to February 6th, 2025 meeting. Taking note that one is the site plan application.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? You made it in the form of a motion, didn't you?
Yes, I did, but then I, so maybe we, even if we get a second, we can discuss.
Yeah, a second, so we can discuss it.
Okay, the motion is second to grant the continuance to February 6th, 2025 for the application PSPR 24-2 for Zero Mon Ponsett Street.
But before we vote, can we talk about the application and the dates?
Certainly, you can do that.
Do I need to bring that up? So we have, so it'll be, it'll be, it'll be up here.
Okay.
So I might need to know this season to get to that, right? Can you tell me how that got? Oh, yeah. Okay. Sorry, I'm like, but.
I said, don't be looking at me. I'm just closest to the screen. That doesn't mean I'm an expert.
Basically not to turn it on, that's about it.
How do I ask?
Exit full screen? No, no, don't leave that. Exit full screen, down to the bottom, right there.
Oh, there it is. Thank you. And then the files, where are the planning board files? I think he showed me, and now I don't remember.
If you go down bottom left, that.
I know. Zoom again.
Oh, so you see that? Yeah.
Thank you. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, guys, I'm here if you need me.
Danielle, we're looking for, hi, and happy new year. We're looking for the application for Zero Mon Ponsett Street, 9510. Do you know what the?
All right, so are you in the documents folder?
Yep.
All right, so all the way to the left, there's going to be an R drive?
R drive.
All the way to the left. Yeah.
I think it says regular R.
Oh, thank you.
Go in there, and I forget what I put it under, but it's in there.
So Planning Board?
And then, yep.
And then Zero Mon Ponsett?
Zero Mon Ponsett, please.
Permit application.
So it's a special permit, is that what we're?
Yeah, that's a site plan as an application. On our list.
Sorry. So, Danielle, we're going to share our screen with you so you can see what we're doing. Can we actually share our screen? Does that give us an off again?
Yeah.
All right, so.
That one.
Tell me what to click. So you can see what we're dealing with, right?
Yep.
All right, so we're in Zero Mon Ponsett. Site plan review or special permit?
Are you guys looking for the date?
No, I'm glad you did.
I'm sorry?
What is it that you're looking for?
The application, so we can see the dates. Do you know what the dates were, like when they applied? We're making sure that they, we still have time.
The applications wouldn't be in there. Those are on Open Gov, but I believe the dates for those, it was November 15th, I believe. It was submitted.
We need an extension.
That's, yeah, that's what he was at. They were asking for it, right?
Okay, okay, thank you. So we need to do, let's do a 60-day extension to December 30th.
That would be safe.
Right.
Yeah, give it plenty of time.
And then, so add that to December 31st. 31 is 13, plus 13 is February 13th. So let's do a 75-day extension, I think, because it'll put us to the second meeting in February.
But those, that would be.
I would like to add to the motion that we continue the hearing to February 6th and also extend site plan application 75 days to, I just had it, right?
Yeah, February.
February something.
71, 32?
I was assuming you can't.
February 20th? No, that's March, sorry. February 20th, yeah.
60 days, oh, 60 days would be okay because it would bring it to, 27 was 32.
Don't even count the days, just pick a date.
Yeah.
Extend it to.
Okay, good idea. February 28th, 2025. So we're going to extend the site plan application to February 28th, 2025.
Because the meeting's the 20th, so.
And continue the hearing until February 6th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. So amended motion?
Second amendment.
February 6th or February 20th? We have the meeting on the 20th.
Yeah, we have another one on February 6th, too.
Yeah, or they just said an extension. They don't care one way or the other.
Well, why don't we just send it to the 6th and then I can.
And if we have to change.
Yeah, yeah, we can do it.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to extend it, the application, till the meeting of February 6th, and the extension itself till February 20th? Does that sound right?
28th.
28th.
2025.
So I have a motion and a second. Take a voice vote, Brendan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Tom?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Okay, passes unanimously. Do we have to sign this off, or is she going to take it from there?
Today is January 16th. If you want to go on to the next thing on the list, then I don't mind because I'll just send this around.
Then we'll go on. Okay, we have a continuation for the appointment on the application 22-SUB-226, Hilldale Lane, for approval of the definitive plan and subdivision modification. Where are we with this? We do have.
Can I draw up your real quick?
Sure.
I was going to do it anyway. I got an email after I left the office today requesting an extension for this, which is why no one's there tonight. Let me see. Request to continue the public hearing schedule for tonight through next meeting and to ask for 30-day extension to the subdivision application.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What were the dates again?
Hold on just one second.
30 days and February 6th?
Yeah, 30 days. Yeah, it just says 30 days here.
Okay, and then we'll just continue to the next? Okay.
Yeah, it looks like, I'm just reading the letter that Joe Webby sent over. It looks like they're just asking for an extension to get more time from zoning.
Okay.
So yeah, 30 days should be good then.
Do you know what date they were expiring? On the site plan, I mean.
I don't, off the top of my head. You want to just leave that portion blank for now? I'll go on Open Gov and see if I can grab the date while you guys continue on here.
All right, thank you.
So what did it just get held up in zoning, or what?
Well, from what I understand, Monday night, they didn't have enough members to vote on the special permit, so they, if I got that correct.
That's right.
They didn't want to?
He wanted, he didn't want the, he only got four on the board, so he would have had to have all four votes. He would have had to have four votes in the affirmative, and he decided to, you know, go now. He's going to, he's postponing this hearing. And he's going to continue when it comes to us on February. Hoping to have five members there? They have five members. He's got a better shot. If he doesn't have his stuff right here, what do you have? What do we do? We can't, we can't vote on it until it goes through yet.
Well.
Does he have, does he have everything in order? Well, he has to have the special permit in order to get the site plan approval. But he doesn't have the road. What's he applying the special permit for? I kind of lost track of that. I think the special permit is for the building, for the two buildings. There's your two house lots that he can put out back. Okay. Is he doing two house lots, or is he doing four house lots?
Maybe four.
He's doing four.
That's if he can get the other two all back.
The road that is just going in there.
It's across the weather.
Yeah, but by the common, it says it's got to be 20 feet. I don't picture it, you can turn the traffic now. Finally, I ended at 20 feet.
So the variances for making the driveway a shared driveway? Is that what it is?
I think so, yes.
So the last time he was here, he talked about how, where he wanted the driveway to go, but by the bylaw, it had to be in the shortest distance, which was up in the top left-hand corner of the site plan, if you remember that, right? So he wanted it over here, but the conservation was going to work on whether or not it was going to get approved for up here, if he could get it down there, and that was the big thing.
Before he was like, yes.
Hold on, hold on.
So, but I think that that was the reason why we didn't make a decision and sent him to conservation to say, are you going to allow me to do this? And then once that was a yes or no, they were going to come back. He was going to come back here for site plan approval.
Has he agreed to do the road first?
Yeah, right?
No.
No, he hasn't agreed to do the road first.
He wants it to do a driveway.
He has to agree to do the road. So he has to do the road first before he continues.
So I guess conservation has only approved the road, but not the rest of the subdivision, and I don't know how you can divide a subdivision up like that. So that would be something you'd need to consider. Are you actually refusing yourself because you have family members on the street, or?
I have no interest in it.
I was just curious.
I'm not a member, I have no interest in it.
It's immediate, it's immediate family.
I'm just here for my own information. When I go back to the zoning board, I'm.
I was just curious.
No.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean.
I mean, the road is going to be built first, right?
They're trying to make it a driveway.
The way he goes out and he spreads it out on the two, the last two lots is.
So they shortened the road.
He shortened the road to 450 feet.
And then it'll be a common driveway after it. So what's this hardship?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, he hasn't, he hasn't, he hasn't said anything to us about it. He just continued the meeting.
Why wouldn't he ask?
He wanted to continue the meeting.
You should ask him what his hardship is.
And then next meeting, but he has to come through you guys first.
They did submit a plan here, if anyone wants to look at it, but you know, I guess it was kind of a tight radius as far as the fire department was concerned.
Did they write us?
And he did submit, Mr. Webby did submit a two-page letter here with 17 different entries on it in regards to the revisions of the plans as requested revision, the underground water, and there's several things on it. But you know, we really need them present to discuss it.
They need to at least come in so we can discuss what they're doing, and then. Does he have, does he have the drainage issue? Does he have the stormwater?
Is there a stormwater management?
Protection ponds in place, so the other people won't get flooded? I mean, those are the things that we have to, you know, before we.
Because there's an awful lot of wetlands back there.
Yeah.
It's a FEMA flood zone.
And right there with the river is, you can fall rock.
And we can't render his piece of land useless, but we have to perform, try to put something in there that will, that will go. He needs a plan that addresses everything, and they have to.
Right.
Con conditions and.
I might be crazy, the way I'm remembering this, but he's come back a couple times. We keep sending him to conservation, and then they keep coming back, and then we keep sending him back to somewhere else for something.
But he changes the plan, that's why.
That's why, that's the game. Okay, so I am, it's not that I'm crazy, but I was missing something.
Yeah, he keeps, he keeps changing it. We got somewhere with him a couple years ago, and then.
Yes, a couple years ago.
And then changed it again.
What have you been out for the last conversation, where the tables were set up up there, right, in December? And then, right, and then it was here, and we're like, all right, you need to go to conservation to get the approval. And the only thing I thought we were waiting on was the driveway to get the final approval, so that he could come back here, and we could approve the street and the two, releasing the two lots, and then everything else was going to get done. And now here we are, where.
Open the year.
It's funny, I had an interesting conversation over the last couple weeks with somebody that was like, you'll never understand why nothing gets done in town politics or in Capitol Hill until you join the board.
Yeah, pretty much.
Wow, that's the best way to put it. You want to wonder why nothing gets done. I just, I don't.
Hurry up and wait.
It's a lot of this. Drives me insane.
All right, well, they did request the, you know, the extension and to put on, I guess, our next meeting, which would be February 6th. Is that right?
Can I ask a question before that?
Yes, sure.
Not be difficult, but just so that we're not on this rotary here. So he wants to wait until the next conservation meeting, where he can get five people, but then.
Next zoning.
Zoning, oh zoning, I'm sorry, zoning. But then zoning is going to say, well, what did the planning board say? You got to go back to the planning board. And then we're going to go.
We meet on that time.
Go back to.
To your point, I'm trying to remember. This, so much time elapses, it's hard to remember everything that happened. They need to come back, and we need to go over the plan and give them direction.
Yeah. And then say, don't change this plan, bro.
Right, right.
That's very professional.
He's changed this plan more than, more than once.
Yeah.
Yeah, like once a year, right?
More than once, he's changed this plan. And you, as a board, you have to vote on the plan that he's presented. Which one is it?
Well, then they come in here, and they go, and they have Mr. Webby, who's obviously an established professional in this town. And he gets up, and he does a presentation based off of like, well, what do you guys mean we have to go back? It's like, well, you changed the plan. Stop changing the plan, we can actually push this through.
And how many times has that happened to us as a board?
That's what I mean.
Goes right down the list, you know?
It's just very.
And what we do, and we end up with 50 site plans, and we really have no idea which one. We're checking dates to find out which is the most recent, and it's convoluted to say.
More than record, I'm sick of people, or I'm sick of that project coming out, and then Amy states the bylaw, which is the bylaw, and then they look at us like we're crazy. Whoa, 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 what do you mean? They go, whoa, whoa, stop changing the plan. You know what I mean? So that's the thing, because they'll come in with a new plan and then be flabbergasted that we're asking them to go through the proper channels again. So extend it with the, is there a way to extend it with the expectation? Or with the request, enough is enough? Pick one and go with it, and either get it approved or don't? Because otherwise, we're going to keep extending it.
Well, they can do whatever they want. If they're going to keep changing it, then we just do our due diligence on what is in front of us, and if it doesn't happen, then.
Right, we can only vote.
What does that do for them?
What is the most recent plan?
I know.
See what I mean? They can keep extending it, but then they have to keep showing up just to be leaving with their, with nothing but their hat in their hand. It's like, that's why I'm saying, let's put a, let's put an expectation on that says, or else. I mean, I don't know what to say.
Was it a couple meetings ago that, I'm trying to remember, was he going to meet with the residents because you had some things you wanted to include in the plan?
We're supposed to stake out the roads, see exactly how far it was.
We don't stake out where it is, do we do that?
He did came and put the stakes out, yes.
I'm sorry, could you state your name and your address, please?
Diane Brapp, 131 here.
Okay, thank you.
Now, you said you had questions. Would you like to air those questions for the record so that maybe we could get those answered in advance? Is that loud or not?
Yeah, or is it not?
It's not.
Oh, yeah, it gets tricky because we're not here.
Yeah, the applicant, so.
And they asked for a contingency.
Yeah, right.
You know what you could do is you could send those questions in an email to Danielle, and then we can forward those over there. For that way, they're prepared, so when they come in the next time, we can have them.
I just don't, yeah, there's just two, those two lots at the beginning, yeah, this road that they're trying to pass here. Those got passed 20 years ago. The water table, it doesn't seem like anybody's had any effect with those. We're putting on the road in, but we don't know if the water table is too high right now to have those two lots, because it's never came up. They're using lots from 20 years ago, plans from 20 years ago. But then they're changing the plans, but those lots are still on that map. How can that happen?
Right. Well, the water table has changed, and the FEMA flood zone is extended back down.
So are those even lots anymore?
Well, they can be lots, whether they're buildable.
Buildable?
Right?
As long as it meets the dimensional requirements, it can be considered a lot. But whether it's buildable, like she said.
So what would be the next step to find that out?
They'd have to show that.
You'd have to show.
You also just want to be careful what you're asking, because if those are not buildable lots, then there will be no buildable road, because it will not be profitable for him to build the road.
So we just stick with what we have?
We're not giving you a direction, but you have to consider that.
That reminds me of what I have.
If it wasn't, we wouldn't be here.
Yeah, we say, yes, do what you want.
It's like they want us to jump the hoops, so they get what they want.
Well, they have to delineate it, and it has to be reviewed by a reviewing here for the town.
So my process on this is the same as the last time, where conservation has only gone over the road that shortened. What about the rest of it? And then if we approve the site plan, number one, gives them a huge amount of variances just from, from what they are asking for right now with the one side. No, are they doing sidewalks at all? One sidewalk?
One side was a sidewalk.
Yeah, that was part of the negotiating, right?
They'll do the water, but they're not going to, they're going to have above-ground.
Utilities.
Utilities, and things of that nature. So they're asking for variances, and then on top of it, they're asking for a variance from you, and that's kind of, that's the detrimental part to the people is that if they're, if they're asking for too many variances and special permits upon it, then when are we not doing what's right by the people, like around it? Which is really what our job is here, is to protect the people.
This site's been born on for 30 years, yes.
Long, long. Well, since I've been here, it's been on the agenda every year.
And every time they come to find it, the boards, they have a different plan, like what Ali said.
Oh, I know.
Come in with a plan that you really want to go with, stick to it, and go through it. Other than that, you can't keep changing a horse in the middle of the race, you know?
I agree.
What is the latest plan? Do we have a date?
It's 12/30/24.
Okay, so that theoretically would be the most recent plan.
So that's where he drops the road to the 482 feet from 900 and something, and then needs, because of the wetlands, he has to have a driveway that goes across, and they aren't even sure where the driveway would go across, remember? Because.
And they need a bridge.
Right. That, and they need to find the shortest. So there's a lot of things that need to be worked out in conservation beyond it, so I think maybe that's where they should go back to.
That would seem to make the most sense. I mean, if you, the individual lots, it's a little tricky because people do delineation of the road, but necessarily doing a lot. You know, the individual lots really don't concern us per se as long as he's got access to them.
But he doesn't.
But then he's going to have to deal with it at some point anyway.
Yeah, but he doesn't have access because it's, he's asking for the variance for a shared driveway.
Okay.
So then he wouldn't be going over his own frontage.
But is that because of the wetlands? So he's got illusory furniture? Is that?
To avoid that stream.
Basically what it is.
Yeah, it's because the way that it was articulated to us is that it has to go over the shortest distance between the two points over the water of the stream, right? And so where he wants, where it wanted, where it was originally was in the front, like when you come up to the end, you go right over. But instead, that's not the shortest part of the stream, so it has to come up and then over. That was foul, Webby explained it to us.
The fire department just came back and says, you can't do a 16-foot road. We wanted 20 feet now.
Okay.
So now he's even going wider, and at the end, there's no circle for the fire engine to turn around.
He did submit a, what does he call it? A sweep plan.
Well, the 60 feet isn't good enough, the color section, they want 80. He said he needs 80.
Yeah, Sheldon, where is that?
This one.
From a protocol perspective, just for my own knowledge, at what point are you able to say, no, we don't grant? Is that possible or not?
Well, we could.
I'm not saying that right now. I'm saying, to end the rat race, when do we say, to Mr. Nezrel's point, or all of our points, pick one, go with it, and we are not going to extend it from there? Stop playing the game. And if that was the case, would that work in, I mean, would that?
As far as I know, there's nothing written in stone that says we have to grant an extension.
I'm not saying not to do it tonight.
Yeah, absolutely, but anyway, on any application.
If we let them know in advance and said, we are not going to do this anymore.
Or is it their right to seek the?
I think they can keep asking.
Well, it's Ray, devil's advocate, so then, so people do this, and then we can vote to fail it.
Right, exactly, and then they can appeal if they want.
They can appeal it, or they can come back in two years.
With another point.
But it's a subdivision.
If you reach it in the cookie jar, you don't slap his hand once in a while.
Unless they go to the zoning board. I think substantially different plan.
Right, which they are good at.
I heard, I go on vacation, because I miss a meeting. And the last one I did, it went through conservation?
See, I go on vacation and miss meetings all the time. We're sorry.
It's not all the way through conservation, though. It's not all the way through conservation, though.
Okay.
I mean, this is a subdivision modification, so they have the subdivision, as long as they don't modify it. But they can't modify it like this necessarily. But I think that conservation should have to do the whole thing in order for us to even give a variance on something that we won't even know if conservation would even do it.
Because they're going to have to decide in replication, but they haven't.
Well, none of that's decided. They only have the roads worked out.
They should deal with conservation first.
Right.
Because then, then they can make the plan accordingly.
Right.
As opposed to getting a plan approved, and then finding out conservation wants everything changed. It doesn't make any sense.
And then what are we going to send him? I La had it recorded at the registry deeds with the shortened road, and now he has a short. But even beyond that, currently, the chief says that he's not, the chief, correct? The chief says that he's not even into it, so basically.
That one is saying that it is. You see how it made the sweep? But the previous one, I believe, the previous one, it couldn't make the corner.
It doesn't look like it's making the corner.
But did the chief say it was okay?
Well, it's just the back end of it.
I don't know. This is, I think it's the second page. It references the fire chief.
So what if we grant an extension?
This is why we needed in writing from the fire department. You know what I mean?
That one was at the first page.
We have added a swept path analysis. We have added a swept path analysis.
A swept path analysis.
So instead of the engineer being in touch with our, that, we need all of the boards and departments to send their information into us because this is somebody that's working for the applicant. No offense to Lake Webby or anything, but it's somebody that's working for the applicant.
So if we grant the extension with a list of instructions of what to do next?
Yeah, we should give them some indication of what we're looking for. Because otherwise, we're just, to your point earlier, spinning our wheels in theirs and everybody else's.
Okay, I think that they need to go to conservation and have the whole subdivision modification approved by conservation prior to going to the other boards.
Yeah.
Other than that, we're just guessing. It's just a guesswork.
Yeah. So I think they need to go to subdivision, I mean, to have the whole subdivision. Do we put this in a motion or do we just state it?
Well, technically, we shouldn't be discussing.
Well, we're trying to discuss whether we should give them a continuance.
Yeah, it's a procedural thing. We'll be discussing.
Right?
Yeah, you could give them a continuance and include contingent upon, you know, taking care of this, that.
I'm going to make a motion that we give a continuance for 30 days to Hiddle Lane with the regard that they go to conservation before any other boards to get the entire subdivision modification approved by conservation.
Then it goes to us or goes to zoning next?
And then it would go to...
I think it's planning.
And then they would have, and then we would give subject to them receiving a variance. Is that correct?
Yeah. They'd have to do it to get a building permit anyway.
So at that...
They're not going to get a building permit without the variances from the law.
Right, right, exactly.
Okay. Well, that's how I would think it would go.
Yeah, I think we should go to the planning board and then go to zoning board.
But conservation first.
But conservation first.
Yes, after conservation.
Okay. I got a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second it if...
Okay, there's a motion on a second to grant the extension and the addition of conservation approval prior to review by the planning board on their next application.
For the entire subdivision modification.
So they might need an extension all over this.
30 days.
They know, but that's up to them. That's up to them.
Well, we can do 30 days, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor will ask for a voice vote. Brendan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Rick?
Yep.
And myself. Yes, unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next appointment, which is on the application 24-SPR-244. Arnold Vera, site plan review application for map 73, block 7A, Plymouth Street.
Danielle's coming up. And I can't think of his name.
Burgess.
Thank you. Top line petition, that's top writers, please. It wouldn't come out? Have a good night, you guys.
Thank you so much.
All right, what are we doing with Mr. Vera? Where are we with Mr. Vera? Who had, again, so many extensions on this one?
He was waiting to get some drawings for the historical, right? Isn't that what he was doing?
Architectural plans, right? Danielle, another question on site plan, um, application dates and whether we're needing an extension again or of the like. Please.
Burgess, Burgess.
Yeah, Ken has not asked for an extension at this time. So I'm not really sure what their plan is. I know that they were waiting for some architectural plans and some things for historical, haven't received for it. They've received that yet or is there any closer that I can back to you guys? So I'm not sure.
So the only reason that I ask is because we need to make sure the site plan doesn't lapse and then they would get constructive approval.
Um, I'm going to tell you, let me see.
I think we approved it, not officially, but subject to them getting the historical people. So I think we actually looked at it.
Did we? I don't think, did we approve? But I don't think...
I think, I think we were good with, my recollection is, and I may be wrong, that we were good with the site, but we were holding it up because they hadn't finished the historical. That's all it was.
And he had talked to John, was trying, trying to get an appointment with, and I say John Jay only because he's, the legal is on, for lack of a better term.
Right.
And I thought he had talked to him. We had given an extension and he was talking at, I'm sorry, at the last meeting, because they couldn't make it and they couldn't make it.
He was having trouble finding somebody to do the drawings or something.
But, and, and then we did, as a board also, thought that if it was just going to keep being postponed, then it's time to vote on it, one way or the other.
Oh, we didn't say that, did we? But I think that, like, wouldn't it be good to know what the building is going to look like just in case?
Fair to say.
What if they needed to change it, like...
Wouldn't you think that's, would be where they started, you know?
I think he knows what he wants. My recollection again, and it may be faulty. We, it came up, somebody mentioned the fact that he was having difficulty finding somebody to actually do the renditions, you know, with, with making it look appropriate for the historical people. But I don't know if that was here or outside.
Well, wouldn't...
How much time is left on this extension? Do we have any idea?
That's what I was asking. I think she's digging for that. Danielle, are you digging for the site plan?
Extension.
Extensions for Arnold Vera.
So I know I have, I have all of them. I'm pretty sure they're okay. Let's see. I know the last one, not the last one, second to last one, one extended to December 9th. And then I believe after that one, they had asked for a 60-day extension.
I kind of, I vaguely, you know what? I bet you it's in the minutes right there.
I bet you it's in this extension form that's on the computer right now.
Oh, let's look at that.
Oh, shit.
12/9.
Who would have thought the Jetsons?
12/9.
There you go.
3/20/25.
3/20.
Oh, that was the file, extended to December 9th. And then, oh, okay, so this is the one that you were reading, correct?
It's the one that says December 9th and then I'm 99% sure it was a 60-day from that one.
It looks like we...
And I should be later on now.
2 expires?
2/7/25.
That sounds right.
So as long as we have quorum on 2/6, it's fine. Why don't we just, well, I know, but who knows? Why don't we give it, why don't we give it a 30-day just to make sure and not get, because of construction at the risk.
They have them up at the last minute, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'll motion to do in a 30-day extension on 24-SPR-244 from 2/7/2025 for 30 days. And then the math, because of the 28th, is somewhere in the beginning of March.
No, you're doing, oh, okay, you're doing 30 days onto the 2/7.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're interrupting, right.
It's going to be like March 6th.
What is it?
March 6th.
March 6th.
Correct.
Okay, there's a motion.
20 days this year, right? 28th and 21st. Thank you. So to March 6th. Okay, Danielle?
Yeah, so do you have a second on that or no?
No, not yet. There's a motion on the floor. We have a second. All those in favor of the extension of the, of petition number 24-SPR-244, please say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Did you hear that, Brendan? Was the second or Danielle? Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay. All right. And then, so we just continued the hearing.
Right. So now let's move on to Deliway covenant release. Are you all good with this? With Deliway? I mean, you refused yourself on the other one. I don't know if you were, I don't think you have to, by the way.
No, no, no. I refuse myself in 193rd Street. But I don't have anything with Deliway. That's, it's the thing, I just, I'm way too close to Chris to be sitting here and...
All right, so...
We got the bond, right?
We have the bond. The bond has been registered down with the, with the treasurer. They needed the original. I got a correspondence, which is, I think is why, you know, just kind of giving a little credit where credit is due. I'm glad the selectmen decided, you know, that we do need, we needed town council present for the Deliway because I, I didn't even know that to release a covenant, there's mass general law involved. And so I think it's a credit that we, we get it right, you know, and it has to be done right and... Donning the i's and crossing the t's, so to speak. So, I don't know if anybody else has any information on it, but I, I found out that basically, bottom line, here's what our board is kind of looking at. There's mass general law, chapter 41, section 81U, required for, what's required is, the prop, there's, there's several different, no, there isn't several. There's three different ways or a combination of three different ways that the board can go on it. And town council thinks, I'm sorry, town council thinks the way that we did it and decided to have Mr. Sylvester post the bond is the best way of doing it, which reassures us that we're, we're moving in the right direction.
That we're awesome.
Yeah. Okay, under, under that mass general law, what do we have? A proper bond sufficient in, sufficient in the opinion of the planning board to secure performance of the construction of ways and the installation of municipal service. The planning board may require that the applicant specify the time within which construction shall be completed. So again, Rick Huxton, town council, said the same thing. It's, it's great that we have a bond. We can either have a bond or we can require them to have a covenant. He suggested that the bond is the best way to go. And, and the only thing, according to mass general law, he, he pointed out that, Mr. Huxton pointed out, that we put a date certain on it. So I said, we had kind of tossed that around at our last meeting, you know, and I said, I asked specifically, you know, what's required, 24 months, 12 months, you know? He said that he thinks it's a little excessive. He said if, that Mr. Sylvester said he wants to begin the construction of the road in...
2/30.
In, in the spring.
Yeah.
And basically, when the asphalt plant opens up, it would probably take two or three weeks. I pointed out to town council that he got an estimate from, what was it, SLT, I believe it was, for 220,000. And he said, just to make sure that everything, in case they ever ran into a problem or an increase, he, he got the bond for 250,000. It was effective in December. So it was, it was recommended that maybe nine months from the date of the, of the bond, which was December 10th. So nine months from then would, would be more than reasonable to get it, to get it up and running.
And doesn't his bond run out the end of November? Didn't Sylvester say that at the last meeting?
It usually goes a year. Yeah, usually 12 months.
It's usually 12. November 29th.
Can we just do in line with?
You can do anything you want.
I mean, I know it said nine months and nine months. It was there between nine and 11, but at the end of the day, I mean, just have it lined up without, because it, like, let's just say, I know he's probably got the money, but, you know, business changes. We have a new administration going in a couple days. Things can happen. Prices can spike or whatever. And then if he may need the summer to get through some stuff, and then that at least gives him all of the fall before the ground starts to freeze again.
Yeah, the goal here is to get it done.
Yeah.
Just have it lined up with the bond.
So why, do we make it an expendable of certain circumstances?
Well, see, that's why he recommended nine months. That would give us a three-month buffer.
Okay.
You know, just, just in case. And again, he was talking about, basically, Rick, you'd probably know better. What's it take? Maybe two weeks to put the, the road in once?
To everything.
We're not talking months.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
No, weeks, yeah. But, you know, then again, it's getting contracted there too, so.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I said, well, I myself, I feel comfortable with, if he recommended nine months, that we go with the nine months.
As long as it can be extended.
Yeah. Well, it does. It's, it can be done up until the expiration of the...
Yeah, because I'm sure he doesn't want to put another bond up. He wants to get it done.
Right, right.
Yeah, he's going to get it done.
I don't see a need for another covenant. I don't think that's necessary. I think that's crazy.
No, I think the bond kind of left.
It does. It...
We're not doing any more covenants in this town.
It comes.
So do we need a motion to release the covenant?
Yes. Let me, let me finish this way.
Okay, cool.
He suggested...
Do you have something I need to read?
He recommended that a, that the, the board should vote first to accept the bond, you know, this bond, to specifically say to substitute the bond for the covenant. And then that will involve, will release the lot from the covenant and to the set date by which the work must be completed.
So November 29th, I'm really angry with it.
That's when we would, that's when we release it. He asked that that preferably be made, suggested that that be made in one, in one motion. He said, the board also needs to sign a, a release of the covenant. And that's, the planning board can sign, he said, he said it's just a, a basic, general release of the covenant form. I asked Danielle if we had one and, and asked on Mr. Huxton if he could either forward one or dictate one for us, but we can get to that. So...
So even if it was in the office sometime this week and we all could make it by or something like that?
Exactly.
Can I have that information from the bond so that I can read the lot information into the bond? I'm going to make a motion. So we're gonna, we're gonna...
You need, in the motion first, if we have to, to accept the bond from, from Mr. Sylvester.
For the lot. And that, that's why I was saying, like, this information is probably...
If there's an ID number or something, please read it into the record.
I absolutely will. But what is the exact number of this lot again?
I don't know why 6A seems to stick out. Danielle, do we have an exact lot number for the, for the lot that contains the covenant?
Um, it's right in there, it's block 6.
Okay, thank you.
I thought it was...
That's perfect.
Was either 6 or 6A.
Oh.
Just type it in.
Sorry, I just didn't get that.
So it's probably just something.
I wonder if it's under Sylvester.
There's no address on it.
It would have to be in our drive, in the driver's license.
Okay. So I think it's, it's six hub lots over there, right?
Yes, and Mr. Sylvester is number five. Five Deliway. It kind of makes sense as a six.
Okay. It's not like a street you walk down, so...
And I think Mr. Mr. What's-his-name is number three. Chapin, I believe is three Deliway. So it makes sense of...
Sorry.
Three, five, six.
Yeah, the first one was What's-his-name's daughter's house, right?
Oh, yeah. Why wouldn't it be on the assessors map, the property assessors map, under Stillman?
Stillman?
Isn't that the...
Did he have it in trust?
It's close. It's, um...
I can never remember his name.
Why not?
Spellman.
Spellman.
Stillman. I got the SP in there.
Swanson.
Well, I can look it up on the...
Yeah, it's just the...
It's on our assessors database?
I have it right here.
Why does it just pop up?
It's like a homepage thing for me, so, let's see.
Why do we keep saying Stillman? It's close.
It's close.
What are you looking for?
What are you looking for?
Just lot identification, so that when we're making the motion, everything's hunky-dory.
It's not on that paper? I don't know why I thought I read it on there, but maybe not.
It's not on the bond?
No?
No. The person who took the bond out, he's at number five deal your way, but it doesn't
Well, I have it here because I just pulled it up on the assessors.
Did he have it in trust or something?
No. Kevin Spelman, Cara, Karen. Okay, so I'm going to read the parcel ID and does that, and it's Hold on, 3 deal your way. Let me go back, hold on.
That might be a street address.
I know, hold on. I was also thinking, maybe you said the daughter owned one, that maybe it's in a
Yeah, that was Spelman's uncle's daughter, his niece. Oh, no, whatever that is.
Well, it is probably the right one because it says it's valued at 190, so that is probably right, okay. Thank you.
That's the assessors map.
That's the assessors, as it is 6D.
All right, so I'm going to read the registry book and page. Yeah, this is the lot, okay. And the registry deeds number, okay.
That's why we wouldn't say it on the bond, because Mr. Sylvester is just taking out a bond, he's the one whose name and address is the owner of the bond.
Okay. Make a motion to accept bond number 8054330 for Bruce Sylvester, who lives at 5 Daley Way, Halifax, Massachusetts, to complete the work
To, you mind if I interrupt?
Yeah, no.
To substitute the bond for the covenant located at 6D Daley Way.
To substitute the covenant
The bond for the covenant.
Okay, so the bond will be to take the place of the covenant, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I didn't say it exactly, I didn't mean to know. Lot 6D Daley Way, otherwise known and further explained in Plymouth County Registry of Deeds book 59021-4.
At which time we will release the lot from the covenant and
At which time then the planning board
Yep.
Will release the lot from the covenant
And set the date for the work to be completed by September 30th of 2025.
And set the date to, is that a reliable date for everybody? Okay, to set the date to have completion by 9:30 2025.
Bingo, that's what he suggested, that we do that all at one
I'm going to cling that up. No, no, this is, this is the first, no, this is how
We should get it right, yeah.
Do you want me to try it one more time?
No, no, I think it's fine.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second to accept the bond from Mr. Sylvester in place of the covenant that's currently on Daley Way for the property with the objective to release the lot from the government upon the completion of work of Daley Way to be done by September 30th, 2025.
Good job.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to ask for a voice vote, please.
Yes.
Brendan.
Yes.
Amy?
Amy, really, yes.
Tom?
Tom, yes.
Rick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, passes unanimous. In which case now
Before we leave that?
Danielle?
Yeah.
We'll make sure that we do have, Mr. Huxham said that we would be able to find a basic release of covenant form on one of the files. He said it was in a file at the Halifax Town Hall, so good luck trying to find out where that is, but he suggested that we can do that, once we vote this, and as a motion can actually release the covenant.
Okay, so we'll sign that as soon as
Yes.
So maybe Danielle can let us know if it's in the office to be signed, like, whenever it gets done, right?
Yeah, probably on Tuesday.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, close Monday.
Beauty.
Oh, yeah.
Goodness, light at the end of the tunnel.
Will we open again on Tuesday?
Okay. And again, I, thanks to Mr. Huxham, there was an awful lot of technical things in there, an awful lot of legal things, an awful lot of detail that's why we haven't, and his efforts are well appreciated. All right, let's move right on to, oh, hearings, continue. The app has requested we
We already did it.
We did that one, okay. And now let's go to the meeting minutes, December minutes to sign. December 5th.
So we couldn't vote on this in the last meeting because it was only you, me, and Rick? Okay. So make a motion to accept the minutes as written for Thursday, December 5th, 2024. It's Rick, Amy, and Brendan on this one. All those in favor?
What's that? Yes, all of those three, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimous. Let's move on to December 19th. Or do we have to sign them off?
Well, only
Only the three.
Those three, right.
And then Rick, and then There you go. I'll make a motion for the December 19th meeting minutes.
Who's voting on that one, Amy?
That, I think, is all of us.
I think all of us.
Anybody have any changes, deletions, or corrections?
I don't, I don't wish
Okay, accept a motion then to accept the minutes of December 19th, 2024?
So moved.
In a second? All those in favor, accept the meeting minutes of December 19th, 2024, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. And January 2nd?
The only thing that I found on the January 2nd meeting minutes was at the bottom of the first page, it says, meeting minutes are moved to the next, it's silly, so don't worry, I'm just saying, Amy and Rick were not in attendance on December 5th, it was the opposite, so I'm just going to cross out where, I'm going to cross out the not and say, or, I don't know, maybe we just, meeting minutes were, how about we just put meeting minutes are moved to the next meeting for December 5th? Does that make sense? All right, I'll just cross it off here.
Okay, then we can vote on the minutes of January 2nd, 2025, as corrected.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second? A motion in a second to accept the minutes of January 2nd, 2025, as corrected. All those in favor say aye? Aye? Unanimous by the voting members. Okay, bills, we need some bills, let's
You want me to just read it? Oh, you don't want to save for votes?
Go, go straight home, Mr. Mesrolo.
Danielle, I put all of the signed extensions in the same folder as the bills, just so that you're aware.
All right, good night.
Yep, you're welcome.
Do we have the minutes for the second?
Yeah, we did the minutes of the second.
Yeah, we did that one.
Oh.
Yeah, that was the last one we just did.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the one as corrected. We have planning board account to, oh, what am I doing? Make a motion to pay PGB Engineering for professional services from December 1st to December 31st for Hildaleen Plan Review, 24-105, and the amount of $600 from the revolving account.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to pay the PGB Engineering invoice, number 24-105. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Make a motion to pay WB Mason for invoice number 249308492 for office supplies and the amount of $104.49.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to pay the bill to WB Mason for the $104.49, all those in favor say aye?
Aye. Mm, you're welcome. I think that's it.
I'm having trouble signing any, man.
That's all I have, anybody else have any new business, anything to discuss?
Motion to adjourn?
Actually, one thing, can we, can we, can we put Starbucks on the next agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, cool.
Because I understand that there's been a lot going on. The building inspector has gone up there and basically said, what are you doing? He said, it's, oh, what the, real estate something out of
Castro?
Out of Florida, that's the real estate company, RE, RE, L, I believe.
Oh, RE, L, it's like a backwater?
No, this is out of Florida, and bottom line, according to Ed, when I spoke to him, he said, basically, bottom line, I have a valid building permit, go. So they kept going. He said, well, wait a minute, and then conservation got into it and said, wait a minute, you don't have anything final approval from conservation. Well, there's been an order of conditions that were submitted from the plant, from Conservation Commission, go. And so they kept working. But now, to your point, and to yours also, what I think, my take on the whole thing is that now that the storage unit is not in there, the easement is, the road that was being in there, it has now been changed, altered, and whatever. Septic system wise, they were sharing the septic system with the storage unit, you know, that we approved way in the back.
You were?
Well, not, it's not the septic system, they were sharing the retention
Retention, retention
Retention point. And there is a specific problem with the, there's two different wetlands delineations. The one that they did for O'Reilly's does not match the one that was, that has now been up for the other one. Well, yours is wrong. No, mine is right, yours is wrong. No, yours is wrong, mine is right. So, and again, as far as the septic system goes, from what I understand, I believe Mr. Cody, Cody Haddad has more information on it, but it's my belief that you need, Rick, you correct me for a moment, you need three perks for the septic system?
Eh, three perk system, Pat Brennan, one meeting, when I mentioned it, when we approved it, I said, you only have two holes, one of them isn't even anywhere near one of the septics. And he said you need four, two primary, two reserve. But I don't know, maybe the town only wants three, but anyway.
But they only have one.
I don't see six holes out there, at least I didn't see a plan with six, six good perk holes out there in the areas, they have to be in the area of the septic, not just somewhere on the lot.
Right.
So I don't know, I mean, I asked Bob Valley about it, and he says they have an approved septic design for a storage unit.
They have one for
They have one for a storage unit.
It was just the office, that's all we need, it's just one little office, but this is, this is a
No, you get, well, the plan we looked at showed two separate steps, it's one for Starbucks and one for
Two separate steps, it was a retention upon there.
I don't know, they Maybe we should just have Danielle send a letter or a note to the Board of Health and ask them where they're at.
Well, I know there was a meeting
For the site.
Yesterday, what's the date, Thursday? I believe it was on Wednesday, between conservation, I don't know if Board of Health was involved or not, but I know it was conservation, Mr. Haddad, and I believe Town Council was coming to see what was, what was happening. So again, the results of the meeting, I don't know, I have not heard, but I did, I did speak with, with the building inspector, Ed, and he said, they have a valid building permit. Now whether or not, I'm going to issue an occupancy permit.
What was the building permit for?
Ready for this, though? They had
Because there should have been, there would have ordinarily been three different permits.
Remember, so number one, the easement for all the drainage hasn't been recorded for, which was, they couldn't get a building permit until that was all done.
Because
For the bottom of 340, I think, Altrich 340. The drainage issue, so until that was actually recorded, there shouldn't have been a building permit. And that hasn't been done. And also, how do they have access? Because they didn't, remember 16710L where they were using the driveway to the storage was how they were getting onto the lot?
That was their, that was their drive-through entrance.
And they said that, right.
And they weren't even going to do the project if they didn't have that.
Recorded in Registry of Deeds.
Yeah.
Al just said that, if I recall correctly, as far as the driveway going through, but that was before, again, you know, to Brendan's point and yourself included, that was four plans ago, you know? And now the storage place is out of the question.
But they need the access road because they only can go east, nobody can enter that lot without entering through the storage lot.
We should probably do a little homework and then ask them to come in and find out where the heck, and the
Again, inspector, maybe they addressed that with
And Board of Health, and let's find out where the heck this thing is at.
Because
Because they're going ahead, they're doing a lot of construction.
They don't have access.
Well, they're just doing site work, which technically doesn't require a permit, but
Right?
Yeah, you can do all that.
You can do all the site work you want.
Yeah, get it done. As long as you don't put a foundation in. Right, exactly. They need a permit for the foundation, but they got to build a permit.
But why would they do all that if they weren't ever going to have the access?
I don't know.
It makes no sense.
It makes no sense.
That's what doesn't make any sense.
Because you know what it is, they're all saying, it's easy to ask for forgiveness if it is permission. Did, we, we needed that? Yeah, exactly.
But what if they want a certificate of compliance for the septic, if they don't have one, or occupancy, you know, I don't get it, you know, I wouldn't be investing anything into it if I made sure that was going to fly. Get all your ducks in a row, yeah. Yeah, I actually, this last year, having me in Pembroke, I went to, you know, tore down a house, put a new one up, went to do the septic, and there wasn't an approved plan for it, but they had a building permit, and the house was all built. So I go to the Board of Health, I need this approved plan, it's like, oh, we don't, what are you talking about, it's not in the file.
It's funny, it's happening a lot lately.
But it turned out, they didn't need it, because all they needed, I asked Leeser, I said, well, how do you issue a building permit if there's no septic design? She goes, all you need is perk test. Plus, you know, it was kind of different too, because it was an existing house, it was actually classified as a repair, but it was funny, they got, you know, all ready to go, it's like, so they had to scramble, have the engineer come up with the approved plans, because, and give it to the, and she blasted it right through for me to get the approval, you know?
Leaders Real Estate, Leaders Real Estate, out of Ovieido, Florida, I'm just, the
How do you spell Ovieido?
O-V-I-E-D-O, Florida, and there's a phone number, you know?
Where'd you get that?
Castro, where'd you do, yeah.
So my issue is, I either go out Indian Path or I go off a link and to, and then I, and I never go through
It's crazy, the work they've done on there, it's
I hate meaning to
But if nobody stopped them, well, it surprises them that you can do, and probably get away with all these bigger, all these bigger plans.
But beyond that, all they've really done is cycling. Yeah, they're not really doing anything wrong. Cut some vegetation down.
Cut some vegetation down. They ripped up some asphalt.
I think Conservation actually asked them to do it, or am I confusing that with the 111 River Street one? That did they ask... Did they... I think they might have... Again, like I said, I don't know if I'm confusing it, but I thought they also said that they shouldn't be working there because of something. I forget what the exact thing was, because it's like...
Also, Wednesday, or Tuesday, they were trying to get a cease and desist to tell them to stop down there.
That's what I... Okay, so that is what happened at Conservation.
Whether that happened, or whether they got that... Well, obviously, they didn't, because they were working there today.
Yeah, they're not listening, apparently. But they shouldn't have a building permit because of the drainage easement that was supposed to be signed between Alders and Pack. And if that hasn't been done, because Tom Alder was at Conservation on Tuesday night and was brought up.
It was just the roadway that... Remember, they came up with a stamped certified copy of that it was, that the Registry of Deeds was registered. It was between the Alders and I think it was the storage company that, you know, that allowed the unit. It was gonna be recorded, and they presented it to us with a, you know, stamp on everything. And, but again, that might not have been...
Well, you just said that the other night, so I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know, like, I would have to search the rest.
I'm sure that within the next couple of days, that they were meeting and had Town Council involved, we'll probably be getting some more information. Again, this is secondhand, that I'm just relating to you guys. Wasn't that I sat in on a meeting or said, "This is what happened."
Yeah, I was at Conservation, too.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know Conservation wasn't very happy.
They shouldn't be.
Sorry, as much as you know, I hate to say this. At the bottom of our... There is big red correspondence from the Office of the Board of Selectmen regarding Class II online used motor vehicle sales license.
Oh, yeah. It wasn't on the agenda, though. And they sent me a thing about the conditions, too, that they... It's strictly online sales.
That was the blue focus?
They said all... No vehicles on the property, no repair place, no... Alls they can do is sell cars online. And I don't know what it needed to do.
You want me to read this and interrupt it?
Yeah, what to do. Well, then, we'd have to reopen.
You guys are glad I caught this?
We didn't close it.
Yes.
We didn't close it?
No.
I thought we opened it in adjournment.
We were just talking because... Well, no, I was like, "Wait a minute, before we do that, can we add this on to the next meeting?" And then we just had a conversation. That's what happened. Okay. So correspondence...
I'm kidding, Danielle, messaging and telling you about 100 block.
Thank you, Danielle.
Stuffing all the red lettering she got. I'm gonna have to start my truck again.
Did you start it?
Yes.
I'm confused on what we're doing with this, like, so...
They want us to read it, and they would like the planning board to sign the verification form stating whether the SPR is necessary or not. The address is 500 Industrial Drive. So it's the...
Whether they need a special permit.
Site plan, site plan, site plan.
The conditions set forth by the Board of Selectmen.
SPR is site plan? 500?
Site plan review, so they're selling cars... What they gave before, they're selling cars online. Is really gonna be no cars there or something, supposedly?
No cars there.
Yeah, I've been here before.
No inspection of cars.
That was a couple months ago, right?
No come-take-a-look-at-a-car here. No repairs done to the cars.
Crosswind pavilions, like down by the...
Yeah, like DMC. All right, so...
Because they work on, like, high-level race cars or trucks.
Oh, that's okay. That rings a bell, no?
And didn't we do one at one point?
We talked to them and nothing happened.
It was Dell, someone would do something like that? Selling cars online?
It was DMC.
Yeah.
The same building.
Right.
So...
So they're basically asking whether or not we think a site plan is required or not, based on the stuffs.
I mean, are we... All right, so the Board of Selectmen have a notice of a public hearing that they're gonna be holding on January 24th. So the town selectmen are gonna have a hearing on the 21st at 6:00 PM in the selectmen's meeting room here relative to the application for a Class II online used motor vehicle sales license to Timothy J. Dunn for 1734 Auto Brokers LLC on property located at 500 Industrial Drive. So...
They're just asking for...
Yeah.
What they're saying is, is like, because I think... I'm sorry.
No, yeah, fine.
I think, how I'm reading it, is that because it's a change of use, do they need a site plan? Where if, as long as the business, I'm thinking, as long as the business adheres to the regulations set forth by the Board of Selectmen, that there won't be cars on the lot, then we don't need to have a site plan review.
Are you gonna do a site plan review?
Again, why the fact that...
There's nothing for us to review.
But in order for it to stay in line with the protocol.
No, no, yeah, no, I understand.
So I think, I don't think there is unless somebody's gonna enlighten me on why they do.
Based on what I'm hearing, I can't see any reason to require a site plan. I mean, it doesn't make any sense. What would they present?
Right.
Well, why wouldn't we make a motion that states that as long as they are not showing cars? What... All right, so let me ask this. Are they gonna be allowing people to come and test drive cars where we're now gonna be doing auto dealership, like plates and things like that?
Specifically, no.
Specifically, no.
I should have given you this, and it would have been easier for you to make the motion on, instead of my name.
I have it, yeah.
One of the things I think also that could happen in that scenario, from a business perspective, is they act as a broker. They'll find out, they'll find out the car, they'll find the buyer, and they have the car shipped directly to the buyer.
Okay.
So...
So no test driving?
No, but I would assume that the Board of Selectmen are gonna lay out those regulations, right? To say, "Hey, listen, you can't have a used car lot down there. That's not what this is. This is strictly online." And then whatever regulations. So I would just make a motion that as long as there's no site plan review required...
Based on...
Based on the fact that, you know, based on the Board of Selectmen's regulations.
All right.
I might even get a little bit more detailed on that. Subject to... All right, so I'll make a motion that...
You can just read the certain things that were enumerated. You said, "No onsite vehicles, no repairs, no testing."
No warehousing.
So they're not even gonna have the cars there?
No, no.
Okay, all right.
The broker.
Okay, all right, I get you now. Okay, so it's like not having houses at the office. Got it?
A good investment, right? I take it from Fidelity, I don't forget to Mainstay. I don't touch that much.
Got it. Okay, okay. So I'll make a motion that 1734 Auto Brokers LLC, which will be located at 500 Industrial Drive, does not need to have a site plan approval or a site plan done as long as they do not have vehicles on the property or in the building on the property.
And they comply with the...
And they comply with the selectmen's...
With the items on...
The selectmen's rules and regulations. Okay.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor of the letter being sent out, please say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. So now, we will show that at 8:20, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that.
Second.
A motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
That way we go.
Did you guys sign that form if you have it?
Which form?
Attached to that.
Oh, okay.
We're looking for reminding you, Danielle. So we're looking for reminding you about that last week.
Oh, oh, yeah.